All right, good evening, everyone. We'd ask that you please rise as we welcome Reverend Dr. Douglas Dent. He'll leave some amication, followed by the Pledge of Allegiance.
Thank you. Let us pray. God of all life, you call us to live in community and teach us to care for one another after the pattern of Jesus Christ, your Son, our Lord. We pray for those whose position and authority affect the lives of others. We ask that you inspire them with a vision of this community as it might be, where love of neighbor and concern for one another drive out discontent and strife, anxiety, and fear. Help us all to work together with one heart and one will, with sympathy and understanding, to serve the common good, to minister to people in trouble and despair, and to multiply true happiness among us. This we ask, in your holy name. Amen.
Amen. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
What is 5:30? February 1st, 2021. We'll call this meeting the Fergus Falls City Council Order. Roll call, please.
Here.
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 Harrison, and I'm not sure if he's...
He's in Arizona.
Nope.
We'll call him absent.
We have a quorum. Just a reminder, there are a number of people joining us on Zoom this evening, so if anyone would like to participate, just utilize the raise hand function, and if appropriate, we will recognize that at the appropriate time. First item of business this evening is the approval of the agenda, and I will call on our city administrator, Andrew Bremseth, for any additions or corrections to the agenda as presented.
Good evening, Your Honor. Thank you, members. Good evening. The mayor wanted to add an update under Section J of the agenda to give a greater Fergus Falls update. So, other than that, the agenda is the same as it was presented.
Thank you. With that, I would entertain a motion to accept that agenda as amended.
I'll offer that.
Thanks, Caroline.
I'll second.
Thank you. Krista, all in favor of that motion, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Pose same sign. That motion carries. There are no public hearings this evening, and there are no bids to award. Under Patitions and Communications, we have a proclamation declaring February 11th, 2021 as Giving Hearts Day. We have some guests that are going to join us this evening shortly, but I'm going to go ahead and read the proclamation, then I'll call on Steve from Lutheran Brethren Seminary to lead us in a short video and an explanation of some of the activities and who's involved in this Giving Hearts Day. But, "Whereas Giving Hearts Day" was started in 2008 by Dakota Medical Foundation and Impact Foundation as a 24-hour regional giving event of its kind, and with Stern Family Foundation joining them as co-hosts in 2014. And whereas Giving Hearts Day is a gateway for citizens to connect to charitable organizations doing important work, improving the health and quality of life across our state. And whereas, last year, more than 30,000 caring donors gave $16.3 million on Giving Hearts Day, and since its inception, Giving Hearts Day has raised over $70 million to support regional charities. And whereas, our Giving Hearts Day 2020 goal is to inspire more than 50,000 giving hearts to support charity on Giving Hearts Day, many of whom get to experience the joy of giving for the first time, making us the most generous region on the planet. And whereas, this year, seven nonprofit organizations in our own city of Fergus Falls, which are Inspiration Point, Productive Alternatives, Health Resources Center, LB Homes Foundation, A Wife Like Me, Lutheran Brethren Seminary, and the Fergus Falls YMCA, as well as additional organizations with local representatives. So they are now for... As the mayor of the city of Fergus Falls, I, Ben Shatterdoe, hereby proclaim February 11th, 2021, as Giving Hearts Day in the city of Fergus Falls. And with that, I would like to call on Steve from the Lutheran Brethren Seminary. I think you have a short video. Good evening, Steve.
Thank you. Good evening, everyone. On behalf of the seven participating groups in our Giving Hearts Day organization here in Fergus Falls, a collaborative, I want to thank Mayor Ben. I want to thank each of the members of the council for doing this proclamation tonight, declaring February 11th, 2021, as the Giving Hearts Day for the city of Fergus Falls, Minnesota. For those who are unaware of the Giving Hearts Day, it's a 24-hour giving event for charities and nonprofits in North Dakota and northwestern Minnesota. And since Giving Hearts Day was first came into being in 2008, there's, like the mayor said, there's over $70 million that have been raised for these charities, 100% of which stays in the communities for which they actually are being raised. Money is raised, we're usually normally give to organizations for their ongoing expenses, or sometimes they have special projects that they're doing to help accomplish something to further mission and goal. So on February 11th, it's a 24-hour day, where we have gifts of participating charities and nonprofits. Any amounts of $10 or more is matched by funds or raised advanced by the charities. So it's way to double their donation. Donations be scheduled now between midnight and February 11th of Giving Hearts Day. Mayor already listed off the names of the organizations that are involved. There's one that's joined us just recently, and that's Freedom Resource Center, and they work with disabilities here in town. They also work with consumers, with the people, they help develop social skills for them, they help them with mentoring, they help them with one-on-one services to help them with independence, they help them with self-sufficiency and successful employment, and helping them become financially independent. And so with that, I would just like to share a short video of it, please. The different organizations will share what they're about, and then what there is, and I'll just wrap up with one more comment after that. Thank you.
Hi, friends. Giving Hearts Day is coming up February 11th. This is the region's most generous day of giving, and it's a 24-hour online event. And right now, you're going to hear from the tremendous charities that make the quality of life in Fergus Falls we've come to expect. These organizations are part of the Fergus Falls Collaborative, and let's hear now about how your gift is going to make a difference on February 11th.
A Wife Like Me transforms women to thrive as wives. We provide wives a safe environment of counselors, writers, speakers, and community to recognize their God-given purpose and potential, changing their marriages and families. Your financial support helps us expand our reach as we assist with counseling, needs, resources, and support, building strong, healthy, Christ-centered marriages.
Donations given on Giving Hearts Day to Inspiration Point are going to go to three different areas. First, they're going to be given to scholarships, so any kid who wants to go to camp can. Secondly, we're going to be adding a zip line out at Inspiration Point, so that kids can experience something brand new. And thirdly, we're going to be finishing up some cabins out at Inspiration Point, and over the course of the summer, these cabins are going to make it possible for 300 more kids to be able to go to camp. Thank you so much for your donations.
I'm with the Lake Region Healthcare Foundation, and our focus is to support our local nonprofit hospital, Lake Region Healthcare, with their mission to improve the health and wellness of people in our region. And our goal of Giving Hearts Day is to purchase new chemotherapy chairs for our cancer center. So many people have been affected by cancer in our community, so this is a great way for you to come along and support our patients and provide great comfort and care for their treatment.
At Health Resources, we come alongside individuals and families and offer one-on-one mentorship and resources in the areas of parenting and pregnancy, life coaching, and sexual health. Your Giving Hearts Day donations help us fund and support our ongoing and necessary client subscriptions costs and online programs we use to educate and engage with our clients. We have recently implemented a new cutting-edge program that allows us to stay relevant with medically accurate and evidence-based curriculum while fostering that client advocate relationship. I encourage you to check out our free and confidential services at HRCFF.org.
Hi, I'm Amy with LB Homes, and excited to announce that this Giving Hearts Day goal will be to purchase a tri-sha. A tri-sha is a pedal bike that can safely carry passengers. It will allow residents to again experience the freedom of the outdoors on a bike ride, even if they have limited mobility. Your donations to LB Homes have the power to inspire and bring joy to area seniors. We'd love it if you would join us in making the goal a reality of purchasing a tri-sha. Thank you, from LB Homes.
Lutheran Brethren Seminary was established in 1903, and relooking at Fergus Falls in 1935. It is a seminary for the Church of the Lutheran Brothers, where pastors, missionaries, and laypeople get training to share the gospel of Jesus Christ with people in North America and around the world. Giving Hearts Day donations help under the cost of seminaries, so it helps keep tuition more affordable for those that attend. Thank you for your support.
Thank you for supporting local causes on February 11th, Giving Hearts Day. Now more than ever, your gift matters, and it's because of generous people like you supporting causes like we've just heard about that make this such a special place to live.
Working together in the collaborative like we have here in Fergus helps raise awareness of each of our participating charities and nonprofits as we work together for making a lasting impact in Fergus Falls area. Do you have any questions for me? If not, then I want to thank Mayor Ben, the council again, for this proclamation. It's very kind and gracious of you to do this, and your continued support of the many nonprofit organizations help Fergus Falls and the surrounding areas with the great place it is to live and work in. So thank you very much for your doing this for us.
Yeah, thank you, Steve, and thanks to all the organizations for what you do for our community.
Thank you.
Thanks. Item number two is a recognition of a Bicycle Friendly Business Award, and we'll call on our good friend Wayne Hurley to lead us in that discussion. Good evening, Wayne.
Good evening, Mayor, council members. Thank you for having me here tonight. So for those of you that don't know me, my name's Wayne Hurley. I'm the board director for Pedal Fergus Falls, which is the local bicycle and pedestrian advocacy group in town. You may recall, council members, that I was here in August to request permission to work with staff on a bicycle-friendly business application for City Hall. And I'm happy to say that the City Hall was awarded a Bronze Award from the League of American Bicyclists. So, Bronze Bicycle Friendly Business Award. The city joins 18 other bike-friendly businesses in town, and those range from restaurants to insurance offices to churches, including federated, we just heard from Pastor Dent, civic institutions. So, actually, I was going to mention the tri-sha that was just mentioned in the video is a great project. Pioneer has two tri-shaws, and so it'd be great to see a third one come into town also. So, we'll have to work with LB Homes to do their bike-friendly business application after they get their tri-sha. But what I wanted to share, too, is that this puts Fergus Falls on the top 10 list. I've got this homemade... This is the "you give what you pay for" version of this graphic. You're starting to go out at the end there, so... This is from the League of American Bicyclists. This is the top 10 cities in the country ranked on how many bike-friendly businesses they have. And right there is Fergus Falls. So, we're on here with Seattle, Salt Lake City, Indianapolis, Fergus Falls, Washington, DC, who we're going to try to take down next. Not in the same way it was done previously.
We're to surpass.
Poor choice of words there, sorry. But then, you know, I think all of these, Portland is within striking distance, too. So, pretty cool to see Fergus Falls on this list of cities across the country with a lot of bike-friendly businesses. Just wanted to also thank the council for your support for making Fergus Falls a great place to walk and bike. A big part of us getting this award was the fact that the council has been so supportive of that work. Also want to thank staff for their time and energy. I just saw Jean Bowman on my way in, and I was hoping I could drag her back in, because she helped a lot with the application. Ryan Miller also, but then also a lot of the other staff. So, you know, Brian was involved, Len was involved, Claire was involved, so a lot of folks were involved in putting the application together. So I want to thank them. And just to kind of wrap up, the city will be getting an award packet in the mail in the next few weeks, and it'll be going to Andrew, so you can watch for that. But in the meantime, on behalf of Pedal Fergus Falls, I just want to say congratulations and thank you again for your always support.
Yeah, thank you, Wayne, for all that you and the committee does, and to promote one more activity in the city of Fergus Falls bicycling, and obviously to be on that list with those other cities is quite an accomplishment. So thanks for all your work in the committee.
Thanks a lot, yep.
Thanks, Senator.
Under the consent agenda tonight, there's four items on the consent agenda. If anyone wants to discuss any of those items individually, we can remove them. Here, no one. I would entertain a resolution accepting the consent agenda. Thank you. Thank you, Jim. Thank you, Brent. Roll call.
Yes.
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 A resolution is approved. Under ordinance and resolutions, tonight we have a first reading of ordinance 10, 8th Series, Light Industrial Uses in B5 and B6 Zones. I believe this was discussed... Is this one that was discussed earlier at the Planning Commission, there was a public hearing? Anything to... Someone has to introduce that tonight. Anything, any Ralph or Andrew would like to add?
No, Your Honor, I'd just say nobody spoke at the public hearing this evening, and the Planning Commission was in unanimous support.
Unanimously recommended by the Planning Commission, no objection.
Could we just define where it actually is? Could, and would somebody actually say where physical district it is?
Sure.
Obviously.
Yeah, no problem. Thank you, Your Honor. Councilmember Hicks. B5 and B6, the best way I could sum that up for you is big box stores, so Sunmart, Kmart, Target would be in the B5 or B6 zoning.
Thanks.
Yep.
Just so people kind of understand where we're physically at.
Absolutely. Thank you for that, Anthony. Some like to introduce that?
I'll introduce.
Thank you, Anthony. That has been introduced. Item number two is a resolution approving an increase in service benefits for retired paid on-call firefighters, and I know I see Luke Draxton's in the back there. Good evening, Luke.
Yeah, so we, Chief Maka, presented the letter last week, or in late January, but this is Fergus Falls. Relief Association is requesting an increase to the per-year service benefit from the current $51.50 to $5,500 per year of service. We typically meet and look at our funded ratio as of 1231, which the funded ratio is our vested liabilities, as stated on books by state statutes of all our firefighters and their pensions, as compared to our investment account balance. In this past year, we had a 17% return on our account, which involved, we had decent returns in your investment accounts, and this brought our funded ratio up to 152%. And what the funded ratio states is that if we go below 100%, the city, as a municipality, can be required to make a contribution to get that funded ratio back up to 100%. Where we like to keep it is about 115%, but with the investment growth that we've had over the past couple of years, with the increase, our current vested ratio at 152%, we're requesting a $350 increase per year of service, and that would essentially bring our burn ratio from 152 back to 132. So we still have a pretty large cushion from that 115% that we like to hover on. Back, just looking at some history, I think the last required contribution from the city was in 2010 and 2011, and that was catch-up for the 2008, 2009 bad market years, but prior to that, I think going back to 1967. It totals about $90,000 worth of contributions from the city over a 60-year period. So, a lot of that happening in the last couple of years. One other final note, too, with the funded ratio, we typically look at calculations based on a 0% return for the year. We just budget pretty conservatively. And running it through some forums, as the state has available, we can go down to about a 25% negative return on our current value for the city may have a potential required contribution. Addicting our state aid, we've got a cushion of about a negative 28% return before that would happen. So financially, we're sitting pretty well on our self-funded account and self-managed. I mean, that would be our request by force to the city.
Thank you, Luke. And we can accomplish that by resolution. Would someone like to offer that?
I will.
Thank you, Scott.
I'll second.
Thank you, Krista. Any questions of Luke before we call for the vote? Roll call, please.
Yes.
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 Thank you. That resolution is approved. Thank you, Luke. Item number three is a resolution approving the hiring of Joel Carlson as the 2021 and 2022 lobbyist for the city of Fergus Falls, and we'll call on our city administrator, Andrew Bremseth.
Yeah, thank you, Your Honor, council members. This is our annual visit about our lobbying services, but this year's a little bit different in the sense that we're looking at doing a two-year contract, so to cover the entire biennium for this legislative biennium. As you all know, Joel Carlson has been working on behalf of the city for over 18 years and has done a remarkable job for us. Most recently, in the last legislative session, we were able to secure $1.75 million in state bonding related to the Downtown Riverfront project, which is a good return on our $43,000 investment last year and what we've given him over the last several years. So, this year, the legislative committee has gotten together a few times, and we've met with Joel Carlson, and he's proposing a two-year contract, like I mentioned. And with the economic uncertainties of this year, he's offered graciously to do that at half of the annual rate that we usually pay him. So, he's proposing that the 2021 rate would be $21,500, and then we're back to our normal annual rate of $43,000. It has been at that level for quite some time, so he has not been gouging or moving that up year after year. A couple of things we want to focus on during this legislative session, of course, are the sales tax projects that we discussed at our last city council meeting, and then also, we're working with Representative Rasmussen and Joel on government aid for property tax losses related to the coal power plant closure, which is going to happen here in 2021. So, trying to ease that burden of loss of tax base on our local residents, and this is the year to do that. With the closure being this year, I would hate to wait until next year and be reactive or after the fact. So, really important that we move forward on this this year. The other thing I'll say is, as you all know, the Capitol has a fence around it, and everything's being done remotely, and it's very difficult for the average person to participate under these circumstances. So it's more important now than ever that we have somebody that is able to communicate with legislators on a daily basis on our behalf and be down there boots on the ground, making the connections that are even more difficult to make in this bizarre time. So, with that being said, we as a legislative committee are recommending that we move forward with this two-year contract. The, like I said, the return on investment related to Joel's work has been very evident over the last several years, with several million dollars of benefit coming back to the city of Fergus Falls, and I envision that his continued success and our continued success will be shown as we continue to work together. So, I will answer any questions you have, or if other committee members want to add anything to that, I would certainly encourage that as well.
Yeah, I'll go ahead and offer that, and then...
Thank you, Tom.
Just, I've got some comments.
Give a second.
Give a second? Okay, go ahead, Tom.
Yeah, I just echo what Andrew said. I mean, I think we just get a tremendous value for our investment with Joel. He's just always a delight to work with. He gets stuff done when he says he's going to, and it's really fun to walk around the Capitol with him, because he's like, "Oh, here, I'm going to go and talk to, you know, the Speaker of the House real quick," or, I mean, it's just, yeah, "I played football with this commissioner," you know, and that kind of thing. So, yeah, I just, I'm a... We've gotten a really good deal with Joel, and he's going to keep on delivering for us as he has in the past.
Thank you, Tom. Any other questions, comments?
Joel's done a fantastic job for us for a number of years, and I think we should continue to use Joel. He knows his way around the Capitol, knows all the people, knows the right people.
Sure.
I'm voting yes.
Thank you, Jim. Any other discussion?
Just, I mean, I would vote no, because I don't believe in lobbyists, just in general.
I do have to say, Your Honor, Councilmember Hicks has been very consistent in that viewpoint. I'm not surprised you hear that this evening. I appreciate your consistency.
I think that's what we, what elected people are for.
Yeah.
All right. Any other... Roll call, please.
Yes.
No.
Yes.
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 Yes. Yes. That resolution is approved. Item number four is a discussion on the hiring of the airport manager and fixed-based operator. I know that the consultant is, that went through that process is here this evening, and I'll introduce Brian here to say it. I just wanted to, I think we've heard, I've heard personally, I know a number of you have from a number of members of the Airport Advisory Committee, that they would like some more time to discuss this issue, and personally, I don't see any reason why they shouldn't be allowed to have that time. I don't think there's... Unless staff feels there's a time crunch, which I've discussed with them, I don't think they do. So, I'm going to suggest and recommend that we allow them additional two weeks. There has been a process that's laid out, and I think it's important that we hear about that process, because I have some questions. I know that there's been some questions raised, so I just want to be clear that everyone understands the process that's gone into it so far. But by all means, if the Airport Advisory Committee wants to take an additional two weeks, I would ask that they bring a recommendation back to us in two weeks, so we can move this, continue moving this process along. But that may be the same as the recommendation from the consultant staff, it may be different, it may be no recommendation, but I think we should give them the time that they've asked for to make that. So that's my thoughts, and that's what I would like to recommend. If anyone else has any other thoughts?
Yeah, I mean, I'm in agreement with you. I mean, I talked with one just before I came here today, and I've talked to a couple more before, and, I mean, we just, I personally just think we can't sidestep them, you know, because otherwise, there's no use having an airport commission.
Sure.
So, I mean, there's been a lot of dealing with, as they say, transparency, transparency on this, so it's like, I mean, personally, I read all the docs, and I believe that the one that was chosen, I believe, is the one with the most experience, and that's the one that I'm sticking with. But the point is, is I do believe there needs to be more looking into it, and without, there's no use having an air corps commission if they don't get to, you know, chime in on it.
Sure. I think that's well said. Again, we'll see what recommendation they bring back, and the council will ultimately have to make that decision. But in the meantime, I see no reason why the Airport Advisory Committee can't take another two weeks to have further discussions. Would someone like to offer that motion to that effect?
I will.
I'll second it if Tom prefers.
Okay.
I have one question.
Yeah.
When we hire somebody, do we do an annual review?
I believe, I believe the review is done... Well, Andrew, did you want to...
Is there an annual review of the contract? I mean, it's, I'm sure it's a multi-year contract.
For this particular instance, the board has been working for the last two years on putting together a performance evaluation process. That was part of a work session we had back in, I believe, April of 2019. I'm not sure if that happened with the manager that left at the end of the year, but certainly, that would be the expectation with any new management firm that's selected to run the airport, that that process that's been established by the board would be undertaken and consistently would be reviewed with the staff liaison and the airport board. That'd be the intention. Yep.
So, yeah, Tom?
To piggyback on what Andrew said, I've heard from people who think we, that the current recommendation is a great recommendation and people who don't, and regardless of, and I'm fully in favor of sending it back to the committee, you know, for their further questions and input. And I do think a regular, you know, establishing those performance metrics and then stick into a schedule with evaluating those is a good idea.
Yeah, thanks, Tom. Yeah, I just think it's important that the Airport Advisory Committee, they volunteer their time. If they want to have, they have further questions, they want to have a discussion, I think it's there's, we want to make sure that they feel that they have that opportunity. So we have a motion to allow that Airport Advisory Committee additional two weeks.
If I may, real quick, just to, you know, go on to what Brent said, too, to underline the importance of, you know, not only getting a recommendation from staff and any consultants that are involved, but also getting a separate, clear recommendation from the folks that are appointed as out of respect for, you know, the job that we've asked them to do.
Yep, absolutely. And then, yeah, so we have a motion to allow that Airport Advisory Committee two additional weeks. All in favor of that motion, say aye.
Aye.
Pose same sign. That motion carries. But I do think it's important, with this being appropriate time, Brian, do you want to, do you want to talk about the process up to this point, so that everyone's on, you know, so we are very clear about the processes being undertaken?
Yes, Your Honor, we're prepared to talk. Actually, I'll just turn over to John DeCosta from Landrum Brown. If you recall, we secured him some time ago to help us through this process, oversee it and everything, to make sure sample contract, everything was in your packet. So I'll just turn over to Mr. John, John DeCosta from Landrum Brown.
Okay, thank you, Brian. Good evening, John. Welcome.
I'm muted.
You are muted.
Good evening, Mayor, and members of the council. Thank you for allowing me to give you a brief overview tonight. As Brian mentioned, we started this process back in late January 2019. nineteen. Brian reached out to me, I work a lot with Minnesota airports and a lot of small, general aviation and small commercial airports and have dealt with many FBO situations. Reached out to me and asked for a proposal to assist the city in doing a solicitation for, request for proposals for the FBO management and the, or I'm sorry, FBO services and the airport manager position at Fergus Falls. We developed a specification that was really based on my proposal, which really identified, as we talked about, it was going through a request for proposals process versus a request for qualifications process. And I just wanted to talk about the difference because I think a little bit of that goes into the interview selection, or the interview process and the selection. Request for proposals, particularly for FBO services, are a situation where you usually define the general services that you're looking for and then you ask each company to prepare for you how they would best respond to the request. Request for qualifications is really more of an open-ended situation where we'd say, we want you to manage the FBO, how would you do it? And that's where typically the interview process comes into play because it's very subjective, it's based on the individual needs of that person, desires of that person. So, there could be some, quite a bit of subjectivity in how things could be responded to. So, just wanted to clarify that we consciously decided to go with the request for proposals process because we had an existing contract, an existing operator at the airport. And, I mean, the operator was planning to retire, so we wanted to make sure that we had a situation, we wanted to bring some continuity to it and stay consistent with what we've done in the past, yet try to find in ways to enhance the program. So, we developed, we, well, we had a little break for a while in working on this. We started with our original RFP. We then brought it back to the airport advisory commission, I'm sorry, the airport advisory board and had them review it a couple of times, made changes at their request. We issued the, that was then posted on the city website. We conducted a preview meeting. We had very good attendance. I was very pleased by the attendance, the number of people that were interested in the airport. Just as a note, most small airports these days to find an FBO operator is very difficult. There are a number, I reached out to a number of other FBO operators in the region to gauge their interest and they chose not to participate because it was relatively small and they felt that there was too much risk on making money that they chose not to go for. But we were very pleased that we had a very good reaction from the market. So, we did give proposals, I'm sorry, did I, okay, I'm getting a little feedback, I guess it must be me, I'm sorry. So, we did give proposals from four operators. One is, as mentioned, is Alexandria Aviation, which is an experienced operator, offering, has been operating down in Alexandria as a company for thirty-one years. Craig, Craig was proposed as the, as the operator for, or the manager for Fergus Falls. Craig has three years' experience, a University of North Dakota Airplane Arts grad. The other three that we received were obviously local people. We did have a provision in the, in the RFP asking for people to identify non-aviation businesses that they operated, just to give a flavor of, in the event that we did not get an experienced aviation operator, how would we go about selecting somebody and trying to use other business references as kind of the gauge for that? So, we did have that in the RFP and everyone did propose that. Obviously, Alexandria Aviation was the only one that had the bona fide FBO operations experience. After we received those, per my scope of work with Brian, as I did lay out in the evaluation form, the matrix that I believe all of you have a copy of, we're comparing the various proposals and the key points, the subject matter areas are the ones that we'd asked for them to propose on in the, in the RFP response. So, we have a level playing field in evaluating. I won't, you know, I won't go on a lot of the detail, but I think it'll pretty much speak for itself. We did assign a one-to-five point scale for each one of those, or I did, to gauge how I, how I see the proposals met with what I see as a typical industry response. Again, I've worked with a lot of small airport FBOs and kind of used that as my gauge of how they proposed and then what were the likelihood would be of their success. We did then post that and share it with the advisory board prior to the meeting and then the discussion about the interviews came up in the advisory board meeting. And again, we just, we did a, the interviews really are more focused on the request for qualifications rather than the request for proposals. So, we were, we were not anticipating that discussion. So, thus, the recommendation was made to the city, to the advisory committee and then brought to the city council. I'll stop there, just trying to give you a little bit of a brief background of what happened and how we got from point A to point B. And I'm open for questions and comments.
Thank you, John, for that. That's, that's helpful for me, I know that. Questions for John from the council? If not, I guess we'll wait for the, give the airport advisory committee until the sixth, I believe it's the sixteenth, two weeks from tomorrow, to come back. And then at that point, we anticipate that the council will make a decision. Everyone agree with that?
Mm-hmm.
All right. We'll move along.
Thank you.
Thank you very much, John. Thank you, Brian. Item number four is Greater Fergus Falls Services Contract Discussion. Call on Andrew Bremseth, our city administrator, to start that conversation for us. Thank you, Brian. Uh, Andrew.
Probably honors. Thanks, members.
We'll forget what his name.
All right. So, I will kick that discussion off and then I envision there'll be other comments. We'll go from there. But we received a letter from Steve Ruffer, who was the chair of Greater Fergus Falls on December twenty-second, twenty-twenty. And I'll just read real briefly from that letter. It says, "As the board chair of Greater Fergus Falls, we are asking the city to amend our existing economic development services agreement to be a contribution of fifty thousand dollars without the scope of services attached." It further goes on to state, "We welcome the opportunity to discuss additional specific services under a professional services agreement with additional compensation for the scope of work proposed." So, I included in the packet the contract that the city has currently with Greater Fergus Falls that is in place. And essentially, from the letter I just read, what Greater Fergus Falls is asking of the city is to do away with this contract and then the city would continue to contribute the maximum allowed under the state statute of fifty thousand dollars as a, just a contribution for the efforts that Greater Fergus Falls is undertaking. And then if there was additional work to be done, whether it be for the city or the port authority, those scope, those services would be scoped accordingly and there would be an additional contract defining any extra or additional compensation. So, that's the request that Greater Fergus Falls is making, is to do away with the contract and operate like several other cities do. And that's the city allowing the Economic Development Agency to do what they feel is best and operate with being one donor of many, of that organization. So, that's the start of the conversation. If anybody has any questions, I'd be glad to take them or other comments. Mayor, do you have anything to add?
No, just you touched on, I think that, it's my understanding that many of the, most of the communities that operate like similar to what we do, where they're just making a contribution under this particular statute that allows us to make a contribution to an economic development, they don't have a services agreement attached to that, that's just a contribution in support of that organization. If you get into organizations like Morehead or Alexandria where the amount is considerably higher, talking two to three times that, then of course, then you get into services agreement under a, under a separate statute. And I don't need to get into the details further than that, but I think it cleans things up, shows us we support Greater Fergus Falls. I don't necessarily think that, I mean, I certainly think they would be willing to discuss a professional services agreement. And if there's any further services, they would, I would expect that to be. But I think that at that level, it shows, it shows the support. And I think that the whole intent was to partner, to be one of many partners in the economic development and to get it outside of City Hall and to leverage that. So, anyway, that's, that's the request and it's up for discussion of the council. Scott?
The question I would have would be, in what way does this existing contract tie their hands or restrict them or limit them or hold them up? Or why would it be important to do away with the contract?
You know, I haven't, I didn't review this in advance of the meeting, so I couldn't tell you specifics, but maybe, maybe they would want to take a, maybe Steve or Annie or somebody would want to answer that question from their perspective, what would be limiting this contract?
Sure. And now, you know, it might be a good opportunity. We could have that discussion, certainly if there's representatives from Greater Fergus Falls. Anthony and I both serve on that board, so maybe it would be in a more transparent process if two members of the council would meet with their board to at least discuss what the services currently are, currently are, the contract is, and then make a recommendation. Because I don't think they're opposed to a professional services agreement. It's just as it's, it sits, it's not in line with what other communities are doing as far as, that's the way I understand it. So, I don't think they're opposed to that. But I'd be happy to have anyone from Greater Fergus Falls that wanted to speak to it. Or I know it was recommended at one time in the discussion that maybe it's, maybe it would be appropriate to have a couple of council members that aren't involved with Greater Fergus Falls sit down with a couple of their board members. Tom?
If we decided to do something like that, I think that council members Gustafson and Hagberg would be fabulous representatives to be, to undertake that, just my two cents. And I think that's a great idea. And I, I mean, I'll just, while I've got the mic, I'll say, you know, Greater Fergus Falls has, has produced results, you know, they're, they're getting the job done. The board has got a spectrum of community leaders and business owners and regular folks. So, it's, it's getting the job done. They've got my full support and I just look forward to continuing to work with them. I mean, I don't see any roadblocks to, in our relationship. So, that's all I have.
Anthony?
I mean, I personally would obviously would prefer to see a contract remain in place. That, you know, I appreciate obviously what Greater Fergus Falls is doing and was obviously a part of that steering group too. But I think we do need to define somewhat, you know, what the scope is. My concern about additional professional services agreements is, you know, that, you know, Greater Fergus Falls has an objective for, you know, and a need for money. And, you know, what they do for us today, technically, they're not going to do for us under this, or they have no obligation under this, this arrangement. And so, everything they do for us going forward from this point, they will charge us for. And, you know, we agreed on fifty thousand dollars. And, you know, equally, the city has given, you know, pretty much most of the funds of the EIC that we're free to give to that. My suggestion to Greater Fergus Falls was that they go to the county to see if the county would give them the additional fifty thousand dollar funding that they're looking for. They have a territory greater than Fergus Falls, you know, it's a ten-mile radius outside of Fergus. So, I think that they, they should look to the county, you know, to get that, some additional funds. You know, we're already, you know, most of the donations that are coming outside of obviously some of the charitable ones are Fergus Falls businesses. So, if they want to expand their territory, then I think they should, they should expand also kind of where they ask for donations from, which I think is, is part of it. And I, I think, you know, one of the hiccups that there's been is clarity on who's doing what for what. And, you know, there's been times when probably both parties have been frustrated, you know, that Greater Fergus Falls felt the city should be doing something, the city felt that Greater Fergus Falls should be doing something. And I think I would like to see it actually go the other way where we clarify what, what and who is doing what. So...
Sure.
That's my ten cents.
Thank you, Anthony.
Fifty thousand dollars worth.
Yeah, and I just, I think it'd be helpful, I don't disagree, Anthony, that clarification is appropriate. I know they had suggested some modifications to the contract or some changes, some amendments, so maybe it's just, maybe it's just an opportunity for a couple council members who aren't in the day-to-day that just to meet with them, see what, because if there's, because at the same time, if there is anything in there that's getting in the way or it's getting, we don't want to see that either. So, maybe this is an opportunity to look at the contract and if they have, if they have suggest, specific suggestions, we can, we can certainly do that. But if the council doesn't feel like terminating the contract completely, that's, that's fine as well.
So, just one, two more cents, a question, I guess. And Bill, I don't mean to put you on the spotlight, or Andrew, what, when we had an economic development staff member, what did that cost the city per year approximately?
Trying to remember back. Certainly more with wages or...
Yeah. Just what did it cost us to get those services?
I couldn't tell you.
Much more than fifty thousand dollars?
Yeah, the wage, if it was a city employee, I think the wage was in the nineties and then you'll have benefit, you know, costs on top of that, so...
Yeah. And I, I mean, I would argue that we have gotten a far greater return on our investment with Greater Fergus Falls than we did by, you know, spending almost twice as much to have a staff member doing it. So, we're already saving money. We've been saving money the whole time that Greater Fergus Falls has been around. I mean, right now, we're, you know, we're getting baseline economic development for pennies on the dollar. And, I mean, it's, it's been a great deal. I feel like it's been a good relationship. I would, I mean, yeah, I think we absolutely need to sit down and talk. If somebody feels like somebody's not holding up their end of the bargain, then we need to sit down and hash it out. But, yeah.
Maybe it's appropriate, as you mentioned, Krista and Caroline, as the, as the personnel committee, they could, maybe we could ask them to meet with, with Greater Fergus Falls, see if there's anything in that contract that should be cleaned up. Bring it back to the council. If there's something for the council to consider, we can do it at that time.
I think that sounds like a fabulous idea, your honor.
All right. We don't need any action on that, I don't think. Is that fair with you guys? Okay, we'll do that. Moving along. Under presentation of claims, tonight we have claims in the amount of one million fifty-seven thousand eight hundred and forty-three dollars and seventy-four cents. If there's any questions, we'll direct those to our finance director.
Move to pay the bills.
Thank you, Jim.
I'll second.
Thank you, Krista. Roll call, please.
Yes.
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 That resolution is approved. Under board committee and department reports, as Andrew mentioned, I did just, I thought this would be a good opportunity for, to get some updates from Greater Fergus Falls at their suggestion. So, just a couple, their annual report is complete, it's available at greaterfergusfalls.com. There's, will be a public presentation on Facebook for the Business and Breakfast Event on Tuesday, February twenty-third at seven-thirty at the committee of the hall and at the committee hall. So, we'll all get an opportunity to see that on February twenty-fourth at seven a.m. And then, just wanted to say congratulations to Michaela Wolf, if I'm saying her name correctly. She opened her new business, Better Hands Massage Therapy in downtown Fergus Falls at one nineteen East Lincoln. So, I want to say welcome and congratulations on that. So, with that, if there's any other reports from staff, I don't know of any reports from staff or administrative officers, I don't know of any old or unfinished business. The, under announcements, Lynn, do you have anything other than, committee of the hall is February tenth and February fifteenth, Monday, is President's Day holiday, so all of our, the city council meeting will be moved to the Tuesday, the sixteenth. Anyone have anything else for the good of the order? We're adjourned.